I'll be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Pia, Townes Crawford Council Chair. Today is April 12, 2021. It is 6:45 PM. I'm going to call the public forum to order. Ms. Paquette, I believe we have one individual signed up. If you can identify the individual. And to all those callers who would like to speak, please remember just to state your name, your address for the record. And we do keep the meeting to three minutes, and we appreciate your time. So Ms. Paquette?
The first speaker is Julie Lawrence.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Julie Lawrence. I live at 293 A Agawam Drive in Stratford, zip 06614. And today I am talking about my work on the Board of Directors, the Center for Family Justice. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the support that CFJ has received from the Town of Stratford over the last several years. The Center for Family Justice provides free and confidential services for all victims and survivors of domestic violence, sexual violence, and child abuse in our community of Stratford, also Bridgeport, Easton, Fairfield, Monroe, and Trumbull. CFJ also provides prevention education designed to help break the cycle of violence by building healthy relationships, empowering communities, and mobilizing bystanders to speak out about abuse and violence. Last year, we provided these services to over 7,000 people from our six towns, many of who live right here in Stratford. I'm here tonight because April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Child Abuse Awareness Month. In 2020, Center for Family Justice provided crisis services to more than 400 adults impacted by sexual violence. In addition, we worked with more than 200 children impacted by extreme abuse, often of a sexual nature. 16 of those children were from Stratford. These numbers, while disturbing, are actually not surprising. It is estimated that every 43 seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in our country. Every nine minutes, that victim is a child. But there are some simple things we can do this month to raise awareness and support prevention efforts related to these important issues. So here are some things we can do. We can call out behaviors that demean or threaten women and girls. We can wear the color teal. I tried to find a teal. This was as close as I got to show your support for sexual assault survivors. Take a photo and share that on social media, explaining why you care about ending sexual violence. We can display a blue pinwheel on our social media. The blue pinwheel representing innocence is the national symbol for child abuse prevention. Or you can join the Center for Family Justice for a virtual Walk-A-Mile-In-Her-Shoe Awareness Event and Video Contest. The Walk, Open to Anyone, focuses on the roles that men and boys can play in preventing violence against women. Details are in the flyer in your packets of information. You can print and display our tear-off flyer that is also in your packet. Also, you can hang it in discreet locations, such as stalls of public restrooms or other areas to provide a safe way to get our hotline out to people in need of services. So at CFJ, we believe these simple steps can have a real impact on preventing sexual violence and violence against children, and we hope you will join us for these efforts. So thank you for your time, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. We appreciate you coming on, and thank you for taking the time. Because I've been a great resource to the town and a community partner. Ms. Paquette, back to you. Are there any other individuals signed up?
No one else has signed up.
Okay. I do not hear anybody else. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. I will then adjourn the public hearing today at 6:50, and we'll reconvene on this number at 8:00 PM for the town council meeting. Thank you all.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Pia. Tonight is the regularly scheduled council meeting down in Stratford. It is April 12, 2021. It is 8:00 PM, and my name is Chris Pia, the council chairman. We're going to call it to order in the first. And with that, I'm going to ask for the invocation of a pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Shake from the Second District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dear God, please let us take a moment to recognize the resilience of our residents and business owners as they persevere, not only with the current pandemic, but with the state of the world right now. We give many thanks to all of our essential workers who serve on the front line and service in our community, in our state, and across our country. Let us share our gratitude for their sacrifice and wish them continued health and well-being. May we take a moment to offer compassion and love and space to honor and remember the 562,000 Americans that we've lost to COVID-19, the 149 Stratford residents that we've also lost to COVID-19. And can we please give a thank you to our first responders here in town, our public health officials? And can you please help guide us and give us strength and clarity in doing what's right for all of our residents here and continue and hope to work together and make this a place where everyone is felt welcome? Thank you. And now we'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shake. Appreciate it. First item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting on March 18th, as well as the joint special meeting on March 11th and 29th. So I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved Bill O'Brien.
Councilman O'Brien on the motion. Do I have a second for that?
Laura Danko, second.
Ms. Danko, thank you very much. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a discussion point. More of a parliamentary inquiry regarding our special meeting from the 29th.
Yeah.
It's... Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
You know, in the realm of how we all congregate to have our official meetings with technology, my question is posed for parliamentarians regarding the process of when we have a motion that's brought to the floor, then the discussion. In the last meeting, I was not able to unmute myself and participate. I wanted to participate in the discussion. I had a list of questions and wasn't able to express my actual vote, which orally would have been a no if we had gotten to that point. And I could have, you know, next time I'll wave if I need to wave. But I would like to know how the minutes to reflect that my vote was actually a no. It was not therefore a unanimous vote.
So Ms. Shake, your question is to the parliamentarian. Mr. Leclair, can you clarify? Any answer for Ms. Shake?
Yes, if Ms. Shake believes the minutes have recorded her vote wrong, she can raise that, and you can vote to approve the minutes as amended. If the body agrees with her that that was her vote, that the minutes as prepared, record the vote. That's the purpose of the minutes. It's just to note who moved items, who seconded them, any amendments, and the votes.
Okay, so Ms. Shake, I understand, you know, we've been doing this for, geez, almost a year now, pretty much on this virtual world, as is everybody. And I think we've done a pretty darn good job thus far, and I want to thank everybody for living and adapting so well. Regarding last, regarding, I believe it was you mentioned the special meeting on the 29th. Is that right, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay, so no problem. If you would like to make a motion to amend, we could do that. I'll just, for purposes of discussion, simply say I've watched the recording, the virtual recording of the meeting seven times. I didn't see any motion from you to change your vote, and obviously, no word said is a consent to vote. So I'd like to make the motion not allowed for, but I didn't see anything otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a... Oh, Mr. Leclair, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I have to be clear that if, you know, you cannot change your vote. Just so the body understands this, you cannot, in hindsight, change your vote that you made by amending the minutes. The purpose of this motion is if the minutes reflected an incorrect vote made at the time the vote was made, not that a member has changed their position after their vote was recorded one way because that's how they voted. Just to be clear, if that's what you're doing, you cannot change your vote that you made in the affirmative to the negative. But if the minutes reflect the improper vote for you made concurrent with the call of the vote at that time, that would be appropriate to change.
Thank you, and thank you for correcting, you know, and giving the correct language. Was not, I feel that I was not able to express my vote, whether yay or nay. And that would have been alluded to in the discussion if there was maybe a few seconds longer. So moving forward, so, you know, I'm clear, and any other counselors or any other meetings are clear of what the proper that I can, any of us can participate. So I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Caitlin. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the March 29th meeting minutes to reflect that my vote was, in fact, a no.
Okay, motion by Ms. Shake. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Paul Taveras.
Seconded by Mr. Taveras. Any discussion, any further discussion on the motion?
Chair, if I may say something?
Mr. Harding. Go ahead, sir.
So, this is to Caitlin Shake. Is this the first time that we are being made aware of this, or was it made aware through the chair and everybody else?
Hold on, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Harding. Mr. Wright, Ms. Paquette, there is a gentleman, Mr. Chuck Rutamesso, if we can mute him. And I don't believe he's part of the council right now. Thank you. Mr. Harding, go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
So my first question was, is this the first time that Councilwoman Caitlin Shake notified the chair of this or fellow council members? And secondary is that typically, if you have a problem with the audio, you could always send a text, which I've had issues, as we know, with my audio and visual. But I always made sure that I kept in contact with other individuals that were online, you know. So my question is that, is this the first time we're hearing about you having an issue with your vote? I know there was an issue with Greg Khan having a problem with his vote also. So is this the first time that we're hearing about this?
Councilwoman Harding.
Mr. Harding, hold on, Ms. Shake. Hold on, Ms. Shake. Mr. Harding, if you're asking, the chair is confirming yes. About it, Ms. Shake, if you'd like to respond. I'm getting a lot of background on you. So any further discussion on it?
Chris, Greg Khan?
Go ahead, Greg.
I don't know if it's an accurate representation. I did not watch the video. But the Connecticut Post publicized that the time for discussion was only four seconds. And if that is true, then, you know, I think that's a factor. And, you know, the chair should allow sufficient time for a vote before, for discussion, I should say, before calling the vote. That's subjective term. But we also have the purpose here, to Dave Harden's point, that, you know, we approved the minutes, and this is the right time to ask for an amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. So I'll add in any further discussion. So to that point, Mr. Poisson, but before I mention to that point, Greg, as you mentioned, anybody, and as I was quoted in the Connecticut Post, and I feel that we should be continuing on to do the business of the agenda tonight, the meeting is posted on YouTube. I've watched it seven times. Whether we have slow internet connections with people, I understand that. We're living in a new virtual world that is unprecedented to everybody in the world. Okay? And like I said, we've done a very good job in the last year, and I thank all of you for that, okay, with adapting to it. Having said that, if anybody wants to watch that meeting, okay, I did give three to five seconds. I didn't hear anything, and I made a call to proceed with the vote. And Greg, as you know, I heard you come in, and you've had some audio problems in the past, and I acknowledged that, and I allowed you to speak. And that's not a problem. Okay? Regarding any type of visuals, there was no visual made by Ms. Shake or anybody else to vote no to that, and I did not hear it from you. Excuse me, your audio was on or off. All right? But at the end of the day, our job is to, my job, excuse me, is to conduct this meeting professionally and efficiently, and that's what I intend to do. So is there any further discussion on this before we vote on the amendment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you have a problem with your audio, you can also just wave, right? And I have a question for the town attorney, if I...
Mr. Poisson, to the town attorney for Mr. Poisson. Go faster.
Mr. Town Attorney, if someone has a problem similar to the one that Counselor Shake has, they could have said something right away, right when their audio came back on or throughout the rest of the meeting, correct?
A member could raise a point of personal privilege at any point during the meeting that a vote was recorded incorrectly, as we went on to the next item, anytime subsequent to the chairman, Mr. Pia, announcing the vote. Yes. Could have been raised at that time.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Yes.
Mr. Taveras. Mr. Taveras.
Yes. Did you see me wave? Because I also was trying to implement it.
I did not.
I wanted to amend my vote.
You would like to amend your vote? Okay, well, Ms. Shake has the motion on the table first. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, so we're all clear. The motion by Ms. Shake is to amend her vote to, from the affirmative to the negative. Is that right, Councilwoman Shake?
That's correct. Thank you.
If you didn't specify, Ms. Shake, if you can, you didn't specify which item you'd like that vote to be made from the affirmative to the negative. Can you please specify?
You want me to repeat the whole motion?
I would like to confirm which one you'd like changed, because we had a number of items on the agenda.
I'm referring to the special meeting, which I believe was 2.1 and 2.2, which were combined for the council to vote in regards to moving the approval of the mayor's proposed town budget in addition to the mill rate.
Okay, so it was on 2.1 and 2.2. Thank you. Any further, so we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of amending, Councilwoman?
Mr. Chairman, hey.
Town Attorney.
Items voted on together or voted on separately? I thought you combined them for discussion, not for voting.
Mr. Town Attorney, you can clarify with the video recording. But to my knowledge, the items were voted on separately because that was your recommendation. As I mentioned, I've watched it a few times. But the items were combined for discussion.
So is the councilwoman's motion to correct both of the minutes, that she voted no for both of those items when you called the votes on each individual one? That's what I want, I wish to be clear now, what you're trying to change.
Then yes, Mr. Leclair. Thank you for reviving our memories, and it would be for both separate. My mic would not turn on for the duration, back on for the duration of the meeting, and I wasn't able to orate and share that I would have voted no.
Okay, so we'll call for a vote. Motion, the vote in the affirmative would be to amend and approve Ms. Shake's, excuse me, approve Ms. Shake's motion to amend. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Taveras, Mr. Khan, Ms. Shake, I assume aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
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 Motion fails. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I also...
You just announced the number. It fails by a vote of what to what, please, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Town Attorney Leclair. Motion fails by a vote of three to seven. Original discussion on approval of the minutes. Any further discussions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I also would like to make a motion to amend my vote from a... Am I recognized?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. For the special meeting of March 29th, for items 2.1 and 2.2, also to a no vote.
Motion by Mr. Taveras to change his vote from items 2.1 and 2.2, from affirmative to the negative. Any, do I have a second to that motion?
Greg Khan.
Motion, excuse me, seconded by Councilman Khan. Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is Laura Danko.
Ms. Danko.
I just wanted to clarify that I made those motions during the special meeting, and both of those votes were held separately. And I remember sitting in the same meeting, thinking that Chairman Pia was leaving plenty of time for anyone to, however they wanted. No one's vote was stifled. Everyone clearly voted to move this ordinance forward to the ordinance committee. So I don't even understand what the problem is here. I think this is, you just, you're trying to change your vote, and it's beyond that at this point.
Any other, thank you.
Yes, Greg Khan.
Mark, Ms. Paquette. Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Chris. In the, what is the problem, asks Ms. Danko. The problem was the expedited, as Mr. Pia acknowledged, three to five seconds. It was reported to be four seconds. Chris didn't, Caitlin's got her head down trying to unmute. Paul's doing the same thing. I dialed in. I dialed in, and I didn't have a problem unmuting to get attention because I was not able to see them, but I was waiting for them to add to the discussion. So the problem, Laura, is that you made the motions, the discussion lasted four seconds, it ended. I intervened. Chris said to me twice that, I called the vote, Greg, you can't discuss. Now, the rules, the parliamentarian, Robert Rules, says that the chair has to allow sufficient time for discussion. The rules also say that until the vote has started, that discussion can continue or resume in this case. So to the point, you know, if you only allow four seconds, that may not be sufficient time, especially in a Zoom meeting. And if the vote has not started, you're allowed to resume the discussion. So I'll put those two items on the record so that we're aware of it in the future. It will help us, you know, to wave hands and arms. Maybe we can send chat messages to each other, as Mr. Harden suggested. But these motions by Paul and Caitlin are not changing their vote. The problem is their vote was not appropriately recognized during the special meeting. That's the problem, Ms. Danko, and that's the problem that's being corrected here tonight unless you refuse them an opportunity to go on, to have their correct vote recorded in the meeting.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Okay, hold on one second. Thank you, Mr. Khan. Ms. Dancho, you may respond, and I'll open up to any other who has not spoken.
Through the chair, to Mr. Khan. We've been doing this for over a year. Everyone knows how to mute and unmute. We all do it frequently throughout the same meeting. If someone feels like their audio or their technology is not working, there are other ways to go about it. I thought, after I made the motion, that there was more than enough. Four seconds is a long time to be staring at everybody's faces doing nothing. It's plenty of time. If you feel you need more seconds, then that's a problem that we can address. But I will not sit here and let someone change their vote for a meeting that was clearly done with, through Robert's rules in the correct manner. You cannot sit here and change your vote because you feel all of a sudden you have the opportunity to say you didn't have enough time. Well, isn't that convenient? So what happened was, is the chair runs the meeting, and it was run appropriately. Everyone was given enough time, and I'm sorry that you disagree with it, but that's how this happens. You are not a newbie to this format.
Any other discussion from any of the counselors?
Yes, I'll...
But hold on, hold on. Ms. Councilwoman Shake, you're recognized by the chair. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just for clarification for future meetings that we have where we're discussing town business specifically regarding the budget, is it appropriate for us to do a roll call vote as opposed to just asking, you know, all opposed?
Sure. So to answer your question, Ms. Shake, on roll call vote, roll call votes are generally, excuse me, are always required for passing of ordinances as well as budgetary reasons, and a roll call vote can be called at any time by the chair for other discretionary. Any other discussion from any other councils who have not spoken on this item yet before we call for a vote?
Through the chair, I just wanted to, I just wanted to support what Laura Danko stated. You know, as we know, that I have a difficult time with my laptop. So I've done the, my due diligence is to sign on with my cellphone and also sign up on the laptop. So if there were any technical difficulties, I would have a second source to record my vote. And again, as I said earlier, there is a chat spot, and most of us have Chris Pia's phone number, and most of us text each other. So at that point in time, if there was a major issue, I felt like, you know, we should have heard of it prior to this, you know, meeting tonight. And I know there was some speculation online and in the paper, but, you know, we should have heard from everyone, you know. All of a sudden, now we're hearing from three people that felt like, you know, their voice wasn't heard. And there was ample enough time, because I know there was, because I switched from my cellphone to my, from my laptop to my cellphone to answer, you know. So I, again, I support Laura Danko with the comments that she made.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Mr. Pia.
Other items? Hold on.
Yes.
Hold on. Any other counselors that have not made any discussion on this, any comments on this discussion yet? No? All right, I'll wrap it up.
No, Chris, point of order, point of order.
What is it, Greg? I gave you the opportunity a couple of times to speak, and not everyone has, but go ahead.
After I spoke, you said something that I'd like you to, you just mentioned that in response to Ms. Caitlin's request that a roll call vote is only for ordinances and at the discretion of the chair.
Greg, I'll restate.
Is this, is this not an ordinance? And why did we not do a roll call vote for this ordinance vote?
Greg, I'll answer your question.
And would that not be, per the parliamentarian, a violation of the town council rules?
Greg, I'll answer your question, and the parliamentarian is happy to correct me if I'm mistaken. The way I said it is a roll call vote is required for the passing of an ordinance or a town budget or passing of financial matters. This was sending an, excuse me, this was sending something to ordinance that does not require a roll call vote. Also, the chair has, at his or her discretion, the ability to call a roll call vote whenever they want. Mr. Parliamentarian Leclair, am I incorrect in anything?
You are not.
Thank you, Ms. Leclair.
All right.
Before I wrap, before I end the discussion, I'll just say again, and I'll call for a vote. If anybody's curious about the timing and wanting to count to three or five or six, I think we've done a very good job. They are happy to look up the YouTube video and make their own decision for themselves, which is public knowledge. With that, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of amending Mr. Taveras's vote from the affirmative to the negative, please signify by saying aye.
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 I vote, I am yes for Mr. Taveras. Mr. Khan, I believe. Ms. Councilwoman Shake, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Any yes? No? Okay. All those, all those opposed, signify by saying no.
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 Air votes, no.
No.
Air votes, no. Motion fails with three to seven. Back to original discussion. Any further discussion on approval of the minutes? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Air votes, aye. Any opposed?
Nos. We have Greg Khan's no.
Greg Khan's a no?
No. Paul Taveras.
No. And Ms. Councilwoman Shake is a no. Motion passed with seven to three. Next item on the agenda, being that there's nothing on the ceremony presentations awards. We'll move on to communications. Tan Report, Finance Director, Ms. Dawn Sable. How are you, Dawn?
Hi, Council Chair Pia and members of the council. In your packet was the Tan Report, the cash flow report. the cash flow report dated 4/5/21, and tax collections are running a little, about the same as last year, about the same percentage as last year. And we were slightly down a little bit last year due to COVID, so we're right around the same mark to budget at about 97.9%. And the Tan Report, we end the year in a positive cash flow position of roughly $7 million. And the deferrals, as you know, were due at the beginning of April. And from the tax collector today, her report was that out of the $550,000 that was deferred, there's still a large portion of that, about $325,000, that has not been paid at the due date. It's mostly from two larger business taxpayers. And the tax collector has been, has been in contact with both of them and is, one will be paying and the other one she's working out some details with. So we are in contact with them and I don't see that that will, that they'll be paying late, but they will be paying. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Sable for the Tan Report?
Chairman Pia, Greg Can.
Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Looking at page 5 of 5, Dawn.
Yeah.
That you, it does say in that blue line in the center that about $6.9 million is the projected year end. Can we call that a surplus?
No. This is, this is, the reason why we don't call that a surplus, Greg, is because this is just cash. So it's not, it's not, it's just the, the inflows and outflows of the cash. And some of this belongs to, this belongs to all different types of funds. So the word surpluses would be used for where we end up with expenses against revenues on the general fund.
And we won't know that till the books are reconciled.
Yeah, we wouldn't know that until the audit for '21 is done.
Excellent. A couple more questions. We had extraordinary COVID expenses running out through this calendar, this fiscal year. Have we received any state or federal funds to help offset those extraordinary COVID-related expenses?
Yes, we did.
And will they be reflected as revenues in the, in the warrant reports?
In, I'm sorry, in what reports?
I called him warrant, maybe the wrong term. There's a, I'll say the monthly report of expenses and revenues.
The reports that we post on, on the website, those, the year-to-date budget report?
Yes.
Yes.
One more question, please. We have a new federal law, the ARPA, where any of those newly allocated federal funds, will they be used for fiscal year 2021, the current year that closes in June?
Well, we haven't received any of that and we haven't received, the Treasury hasn't released any of the regulations on that. So it's really speculative at this point. So I can't answer that question yet because I don't know what exactly we can use it for yet.
Thank you for the report, Dawn.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Sable on the, on the Tan Report? No? All right, here is none. Dawn, thank you as always. Great job. We'll move on to Mayor's Report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair. Good evening, council. The town offices continue to be open by appointment, only accepting our tax office. They are open when people need to pay their taxes or need to meet with an assessor. We're always grateful for people to pay their taxes. And while our offices are open and fully staffed, we can continue to encourage residents who have business to be transactioned to do it online through email or over the phone and use those methods as possible. As I announced last month, the Stratford Health Department is partnering with Stratford EMS in order to bring COVID-19 vaccines to residents determined to be homebound and unable to safely access the vaccine clinics being offered. I'm pleased to report that as of today, 85 homebound Stratford residents have been vaccinated under Operation Homeward Bound by the Stratford Health and EMS team. We continue to hold vaccination clinics at the Birdseye Center every Tuesday and Wednesday. The vaccination clinics has had a number of successful people vaccinated to date, over 8,400. The clinics will continue on Tuesday and Wednesday at Birdseye based on eligibility and vaccine supply. To get the supply, one must register, excuse me, to get the vaccine, one must register through VAMS. And we continue to work with local seniors who are having difficulty navigating the state's VAM system to ensure they are registered. It's important to keep in mind that we, as we continue forward, that we are part of the regional and statewide vaccination network in effort. Stratford does not only vaccinate Stratford residents. Many residents and first responders have been vaccinated at locations outside of Stratford. And conversely, many from outside of Stratford have been vaccinated here. The state is releasing information on how many individuals are vaccinated. And as of April 8th, 19,000, over 19,000 have been vaccinated for the town's population, it's about 37%. Connecticut is now vaccinating 16 years and older, and that is nearly a month ahead of schedule. Only the Pfizer vaccine has been approved for those ages 16 and 17. Vaccination clinics are scheduled for our high school, with Stratford High being on April 23rd and Benel being April 21st. We remain at the red level of coding, which is we are 33 cases per 100,000 from the period of March 21st through April 4th. In recent events, we had St. Patrick's Day festivities at Town Hall. It took place with the raising of the Irish flag ceremony on the green at nine o'clock on March 17th. In consideration of the continued concerns associated with the ongoing COVID pandemic, the traditional reception Irish soda bread competition, which usually features, is a feature and a highlight of our celebration, was not held this year. This year, we were honored to have Mary Ann Dunin as the Irish Mayor for the Day. Mary Ann had been selected to be the Grand Marshal of Bridgeport St. Patrick's Day Parade in 2020 and 2021, but unfortunately, she's been denied the actual parade for both years due to the pandemic. She was born in County Carey. She's the oldest of 14 children. She arrived in the U.S. at 16 years of age. She was active in the Gaelic American Club in Fairfield and was the first woman president of the club in 1997 and 98. Thanks to the St. Patrick's Day Committee and Senator Kevin Kelly for serving as the host. And I'd like to thank Kyle Doherty from Doherty Insurance for providing bad type music. This year, in consideration of the COVID-19 concerns, my annual State of the Town address was recorded by video and was provided to the town website and YouTube channel and Facebook for, page for residents to view. Coastal resilience is an important issue and we have done significant work in Stratford. And we're pleased to host U.S. Senator Christopher Murphy for a round table he conducted in Stratford Council's chambers last week. Among those that were attending the round table were State Representative Joe Gresko, Council Chairman Chris Pia, Conservation Commissioner Greg Dantrell, Stratford C.A.O., Chris, Conservation Superintendent Kelly Kerrigan from Stratford. There were representatives from Audubon, Save the Sound, Yukon, Air and Sea, Circa Deep, and Nature Conservancy, among others. World Autism Awareness is this month. Autism affects an estimated 1 in 54 children and 1 in 45 adults. It's a complex disorder impacting each individual differently. I issued a proclamation recognizing that here in the town of Stratford and asked that the community join in increasing understanding and acceptance of people with autism spectrum disorder. It was great to see so many enthusiastic volunteers at this community cleanup sponsored by the Clean Earth Project and Riley's at the Seawall on Saturday, March 27. Roughly local volunteers numbered at about 80, including Councilwoman Chris Pia. We cleaned the area around the seawall, Long Beach, Russian Beach, and Burma Road, collecting nearly 2,000 pounds of trash. A special thanks goes to Riley, who gave out free hot dogs and hamburgers to all the volunteers. The Clean Earth Project is an environmentally focused company here in Stratford dedicated to connecting community members and local businesses in a mission to raise awareness, beautify their neighborhoods, and support the environment. Bulk waste collection is currently ongoing and will continue through September 22. Each household can get an appointment by contacting the town's Public Works Department for pickup. Stratford VFW, Post 9460, will be holding its Memorial Day Ceremony and Parade once again. You will recall that due to the COVID pandemic, the last year's events were canceled. This year, they will resume with social distancing and masking protocols in place. The events will take place on Memorial Day, Monday, May 31. The ceremony at Academy Hill will take place at 11:00 a.m. and the parade will step off at 12:15 p.m. I'm pleased once again to resume the town's traditional recognition for those that served and made the ultimate sacrifice defending our nation in times of armed conflict. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I don't want to recognize the professionalism and dedication of our dispatch personnel who are on the front lines in any emergency and in their meaningful work during the challenges associated with this pandemic. I urge you all to join me in thanking them for their continued service to our community. The annual Long River Park Cleanup organized by the Long River Park Commission will take place on Saturday morning, May 1st at 8:00 a.m. at Marcus Drive. Those interested in helping with the cleanup can contact Counselor Shake. Also taking place on May 1st is the Stratford Greensweep and Houston River Cleanup, which happens every year. Gloves and bags will be provided. We will meet at the Birdseye Boat Ramp. Volunteers are encouraged to come out, bring your own snacks, dress for the weather, work boots, sunblock, bug sprays recommended. COVID protocols again will be observed. The Shakespeare Market continues. It's bimonthly outdoor food and craft market held on the first and third Sundays of the month on the grounds of Shakespeare Festival Theater. The events have been very successful and we look forward to having even better ones as the weather warms up. The event features crafts, food vendors, and activities supported by community organizations. The market will go through April 17th, though we are working on extensions. Special thanks to Waste Management, who is the Celebrate Stratford Festival Event Sponsor for the Market. I was pleased to join other town officials in welcoming new businesses to Stratford. Cakes by Sonia is located on 2067 Barnum Avenue. Sonia lends her creative flair and baking talents to the creation of custom cakes and cupcakes and is really, is really a fine crafts woman, as we've sampled many of her treats. Carrite is the newest of the car used developers in Stratford, and this is their second location in Connecticut. Carrite approaches unique. They do not employ commissioned salespeople, rather they provide transparent car buying experience without the haggles. Store leader James Kellerman and staff provided guests with a tour of an impeccable Carrite showroom lined with a variety of pristine late model vehicles. So we welcome Cakes by Sonia and Carrite to the Stratford community. They happen to be right across the street from each other as well. Top Dog Food Supply has executed a five-year lease for approximately 5,000 square feet of warehouse space on 526 Benton. They will use this space for sales and marketing, storage, and distribution of its core product, raw dog food. They are exclusive New England distributor of top-quality dog food.
Greg, we're getting a lot of feedback from you, Greg.
Okay.
Shellfish and clammy and oystering opened a farm shop stand on 639, I'm sorry, 631 Access Road. And Shannon Landscaping is renovating and moving to a larger space on Loop Drive. As you might have heard from the CDBG hearing, Chris Bandeki has, is no longer with the mayor's office and has taken a position with Waterbury, the city of Waterbury. Chairman, I would also like the council to consider the reappointments to the Short Beach Commission of Karen Daven and Bob Jaquil, two dedicated, longtime volunteers who have done a great, great amount of work for our community. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Questions for the mayor?
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien.
Mr. Councilman O'Brien, please, sir.
One request to the mayor and one question. I see that at least one town for the Memorial Day Parade, which I'm glad to hear we're having again, is banning vendors. I'd like to suggest we consider banning vendors also. And then the question, actually, I'd like you to tell us, if you could, Laura, a little more about the recognition by Senator Blumenthal of the Stratford Pal Pep Program.
Thank you, counselor. So I will talk to the BFW and the Police Department and the Health Department about the vendors for Memorial Day. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And Saturday, we were lucky enough, sorry, I'm just writing Memorial Day vendors, so I don't forget it. We were lucky enough to have Senator Blumenthal come to the Police Department and meet with Chief McNeil, Lieutenant Eller, Sergeant Lofton, Aaron McLaughlin, and Donald Smart, and review the, the police engagement program, of which he's participated before. But it was really important for him to hear the updates that had recently been received and the recognition that the state of Connecticut now is requiring that it's a law enforcement officer from the academy receive this training before they are completely certified. All of our officers have attended the police engagement program for implicit bias training, and they've also learned the techniques of calm, cool, and comply. And it was wonderful that the senator was there to give a citation and a proclamation of recognition from the U.S. Senate and also to offer his help with the Department of Justice grants, so we can expand this program and then expand it not only throughout the state of Connecticut, but also through other parts of the nation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the mayor, for the councilors?
Greg Can.
Greg.
Thank you, Chris. Two questions for the mayor. The first one, Mayor Hoytik, referring back to Senator Kevin Kelly's op-ed, if you will, published in the Connecticut Post. To paraphrase, he emphatically demanded that the legislative representatives and the executive branch work across the aisle to communicate and coordinate, but especially the public officials allow enough time for all members of the public and the representatives to present their testimony and that all public officials remain available with active listening. Do you support Kevin Kelly's imperative of this unrestricted access to make inquiries, ask questions, receive tangible answers? Or do you see a more restrictive use of people's time to ask questions and get answers?
For councilors, you know, I've had an open door policy and literally an open door policy into my office and to address concerns from constituency as well as councilors. So I do agree with an open, transparent process. I did not read Senator Kelly's op-ed, so I can't speak to that specifically.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question, I recognize that, Mayor Hoytik, you were once an elected representative in Hartford. And I'm referring to the ability of Hartford and the federal government to support Stratford. And thinking of a few noteworthy contributions that we may want to give them credit for. The governor in 2017 gave $220 million to Sikorsky, which kept them in Stratford. Sikorsky Lockheed's worth about $3 mil to our tax base. Our state representatives increased Stratford's educational cost sharing and special education subsidy by 10%, which is an extra $2.5 million for the town starting in 2019. That's worth about a half a mil. The state leaders in Hartford have also provided Stratford with over $100 million of direct economic development aid from bridges, roads, environmental remediation, Stratford High School, et cetera. Joe Biden, the new president, just passed, well, just passed the ARPA, and we don't have specifics on how we can use it yet, but we are hopeful that 4.7 million of this money can be used to fund our general operating expenses. expenses for 2022. That's about a one mil increase. So I won't. That's it. So the question is, did I appropriately summarize these contributions from our state and federal representatives?
Counselor, you almost sort of did in some ways, but not totally, no. And we do not, as of now, know if we can use the money from the American Rescue Plan or even ESER or the CARES Act to supplement our operating budget. So that assumption is premature, and I would wait until after May 11th, when the Treasury gives us the regulations on how we can operate.
Any other questions for the mayor? Any other questions for the mayor? Yes, Caitlin.
Can you hear me?
Yep, got you.
Hi, Mayor Hoydic.
Hi, Counselor.
I'm just gonna, hello. I'm just gonna come back to COVID testing vaccines for our town. I think it was the last meeting I had asked if we had a running list of pharmacies throughout town, which would be available for residents and people who live outside of Stratford, but primarily here, if they would be able to have access. I know that Stop &amp; Shop, I believe, recently had expanded through their pharmacies COVID-19 vaccine appointments. So whenever we do have that list, if you could make it available so we could share it, that would be very helpful.
Through the chair, may I ask Andrea Bosevain to see if she has that list available so she can notify the councilwoman, so she can notify her constituents?
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Andrea, you're on the call?
Yes, I am.
Do you have a list of the pharmacies that are offering COVID vaccinations?
Yes, I do. It was sent out, I believe, that I think the end of last week from the Demis Region 1 Coordinator. And it's in a spreadsheet, and it lists the pharmacies, it lists other folks that are doing. I have both a testing list as well as a COVID vaccination site list. I can provide that list, yep.
Would you mind just telling the counselor, or all the councilors, what testing, I'm sorry, what vaccination sites are available in town besides the ones that you afford through the clinics? And the one Community Health Partnership is gonna, care is gonna do with the schools?
So, well, we have, the Stratford Health Department has the two clinics. You, the Optimus, that's now at 305 Boston Avenue, provides vaccines both at the, well, there's large right in Milford, which is not in Stratford. And I don't have that list in front of me. But, you know, for instance, we're doing a pop-up site at the First Baptist Church later this month, and we'll be doing another series of pop-up clinics as well.
Do you know, Andrea, through the chair, do you know if any of the CVSs or Walgreens or RiteAid's are providing vaccine?
Yes, they are in Stratford, absolutely. Walgreens and Rotary Drug, Rotary Drug as well offers it, RiteAid, CVS, Walgreens. And I do think, I think Counselor Shake mentioned Stop &amp; Shop as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any? Yep.
I had one more question.
Yep.
Andrea pretty much alluded to it, but if there's, if you could pass the available list for COVID-19 testing sites, that would be helpful also, as that's still an issue. And then my follow-up question to that is, are we going to have any pop-up test sites coming into town in the near future?
If I could just say, so the, I'm reticent to, I mean, I'll pass on the list, but it's actually, I think the best is to go to that 211ct.org and type in COVID testing, and all of the testing sites are listed there, as well as vaccination sites are also listed on that 211 site. But in terms of pop-up testing, right now, you know, our focus, as you know, Counselor Shake has really been on vaccine. Not to say that testing isn't still important, but the, at this point, I don't have any, we, the Health Department, doesn't have any plans to do any, sponsor any pop-up sites.
So if it's not through the actual town providing the pop-up sites, is there any correlation of having any partnerships with any of the hospital networks that are adjacent to us, as other towns have?
Yeah. We absolutely, you know, push people to Optimus, Southwest, CHC, which is the Community Health Center, Inc. site, as well as to Yale New Haven sites. I mean, we definitely make them, provide the information as people request.
So the answer is no.
So, Chairman.
Madam Mayor.
The mayor, yes, thank you. So, Counselor, again, the reason we put the emails that go out three times a week to one, it's the most accurate and up-to-date information. The problem that we have is when we start advertising individual either testing sites or vaccination sites, sometimes they don't stay for long terms, and the general public gets confused and very frustrated when they go to a site that they think they're going to be able to secure a test, and the site is closed. And that's exactly what happened with Yale New Haven Hospital at the Baldwin Center a few weeks ago. So this is why, as to Andrea's point, that we are saying, go to the most updated, consistent list, and that's two of them.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Can I respond to that?
You have another question for the mayor, Caitlin?
It's just a follow-up.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I hear, you know, the concern, and we don't want residents to be confused. My concern is that accessibility and resources that are readily available to Connecticut residents across the whole state. If there's something that we could do to, you know, better solidify some type of a relationship, or even if it's a monthly pop-up testing site, that way it's just, it's a, you know, monthly date or a second Saturday maybe, so that residents have access to that. When CHC came into town and they did the drive-through at Stratford High School, people waited two and a half hours, as you know, to wait to get a test. And we're vaccinating at a much better rate now, but COVID-19 is not, it's not going anywhere. So if we can have some type of a steady calendar so that residents have access here in our own town, I think that would be helpful. I'm happy to further have another discussion offline, if you like.
Through the chair, may I make a comment?
Hold on. Hey, everybody, hold on. Madam Mayor, you have a floor.
Counselor, thank you. So, Councilwoman Shake, thank you for your offer. I appreciate your, and I appreciate it when you've volunteered with us in the past, dealing with the public and understanding how people are perceiving information flowing. It's better if we have one source for the information and not several in town. And that's why we are using the regional facilities of 211. When we know of food drives, when we know of COVID testing, when we know of vaccination clinics, we make it public. But to make, say, once a month, it's almost too far spread apart that people will count on that for the following month, and then, as we've seen in the past, there has been no service to be delivered, and they get very, very frustrated. So that's why we do it this way.
So, Counselor Harden, I believe you had a question. I'll give it to you next, sir.
I didn't have a question, but I just wanted to respond to Caitlin Shake. A lot of these agencies are doing these, you know, based on statistics and areas that they need to go to. And most of these pop-up things are being done, and two days' notice, sometimes three days' notice. And not only towns are being surprised and being notified at the last moment, but they're popping up in areas where they have extra, you know, vaccines on their trucks, and they're trying to unload them, and people are knowing within two or three hours, you know, notice. So the agencies that, even with Yale, and I do some of the vaccine clinics at University of Bridgeport, and there are cases where they notify us two days ahead of time, saying, hey, listen, we're gonna go down there. And all the, you know, doctors have been notified, and the people who have, you know, the my charts, and, you know, they speak to their doctors on a regular basis, they're being shot in email and also getting robo calls. So sometimes it's very difficult to logistically plan these things either a month in advance, because, again, agencies are planning these based on, you know, numbers, statistics, and conversations. There are some areas that get the New Connecticut trailer more than other areas. And, again, you know, they're trying to figure this out, and I think all the other town leaders are trying to figure this out to come up with a major solution for it. But as we know, at the hospital I work for, it's just done, you know, based on, you know, statistics and numbers and logistics and the people that they have. You know, some other towns have more people to volunteer to give injections, while others don't. So there's a lot of things that go into play when it comes to trying to plan something a month in advance. You know, they've done this with, Yale New Haven Health has done this with other towns, and they show up there, and there's no one to help administer, you know, the vaccines, but three Yale New Haven workers. And so, again, 211 is the best route. You know, this is very difficult to migrate, and we're finding out the hard way.
So any other councilors, questions for the, just returning back to questions. Hold on one second, Caitlin, hold on. Any other questions for the mayor? I want to get back on target for questions for the mayor. Because we had a good dialogue. Any other questions for the mayor? No? Okay. So we'll move on then.
I continue.
No, we're good, Caitlin.
We're good right now. That was a good dialogue. We'll move on. Next item on the agenda is item 4.3.1. Under Public Works Committee, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Poissons, I see you waving right there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For item 4.3.1, I'd like to make a motion that it be resolved that additional engineering construction fees for the West Broad Street project in the amount of $84,037.58 be, and is hereby approved.
Motion by Counselor Poissons, do I have a second?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
Second by Counselor O'Brien. Any discussion on the item? Pretty in-depth report provided by the Public Works Committee and Mr. Casey. No? Hearing none? Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 10-0. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Poissons.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for item 4.3.1B, I'd like to make a motion that it be resolved that adjustments to final quantities in place on the Route 110 Improvements Project in the amount of $226,975.04, as well as a credit in the amount of $41,320.60, for a total adjustment of $185,654.44 be, and is hereby approved.
Motion by Counselor Poissons, do I have a second?
Second, Dave Harden.
Seconded by Counselor Harden. Any discussion on item B?
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, go ahead, sir.
I just want to note, if I understood John Casey correctly, Sikorsky will be paying that $181,000. Is that correct, Ken?
Based on Mr. Casey's report at the Public Works Meeting, there, every time a change order has come through, it's always gone through Sikorsky first, and so far, they've been taking care of them.
Yeah. Counselor O'Brien, I watched that video too, and Mr. Casey was very clear that Sikorsky would be paying that, so that's accurate. Any other discussion on item B? No? Okay. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion passes 10-0. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is item 4.3.2 from the Building Needs. Mr. Poissons, I see you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For item 4.3.2A, I'd like to make a motion that it be resolved that the award of Town of Stratford bid number 2021-24, networking cabling upgrades at Stratford Academy Johnson House to Mercury Group in the amount of $83,083 be, and is hereby approved, and that the mayor be, is hereby authorized to commence discussions with the Board of Education regarding the use of funding under the CARES Act or the American Rescue Plan for this expenditure, and enter into a contract for such inform acceptable to the town attorney.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Poissons, do I have a second to the motion?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
I heard Mr. O'Brien on the second. Any discussion on 4.3.2A?
Chris, Greg Khan?
Hi, Greg.
Two questions. The cabling upgrade, I didn't see it in the meeting minutes. I didn't watch the video. That's in addition to what we'll call the original specification, and what benefit will it apply? And then Ken made a note to the CARES grant and some other funding mechanism that I did not see in the resolution or in the agenda. So two questions.
Mr. Poissons, you want to tackle the first part of that?
The first one, this bid award was absolutely in the Building Needs Committee meetings in the minutes. Yes, sir.
I said they were. I said, I recognize that, Ken, but the description of the benefits for this item are not in the minutes, which is the point of the question.
It's to, it's the network cabling upgrades is to increase the Wi-Fi speeds so the kids have better internet service, I do believe.
And I'll repeat the second question. It's not real material, but you mentioned some funding sources, but I did not read that in the agenda.
You're, Ken, are you referring to the federal funds?
Yes.
I think what Mr. Poissons is referring to is being able to authorize the mayor, which is stated in there, to discuss with the Board of Ed if capital funds can be used from the federal money side. I don't, my, that's the way I interpreted it. Is that accurate, Mr. Poissons?
Yeah, I believe what we were looking for is that if the Board of Ed received, you know, money, millions of dollars under these funds, and I do believe, the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that this is one of the acceptable uses for those funds, that we could use that money instead of using, you know, money out of our budget, and make it a win-win for the kids and for the town and for the budget.
Okay, I understood. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion passing unanimously, 10-0. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is Town Attorney's Report. Mr. Town Attorney Hassan.
Thank you. No report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Pia, I object to the reception of the report.
You reject to what, Greg?
I object to the reception of the report. I'd like to either just ask questions of the attorney, or we could go to a vote and then a discussion on whether we should accept the attorney's report.
Oh, if you.
There was no report.
There is no report on it.
Yes, the report is no report. So it's on the agenda. The response was no report, and that response deserves a vote. And under the motion. And, uh, under the motion that I reject the reception of the report that there was no report.
Doesn't reserve, doesn't get a vote.
So I could ask the questions or, uh, I'll call a motion on whether we should accept the report as delivered by the.
I wanna call a motion on, on accepting a no report that doesn't require a vote. Why?
It, it is, uh, Chris, this is a report. The, the fact that the report equals two words, no report, makes it a report. I'm objecting to the reception of a two-word report for the town attorney.
Greg, if you'd like to make a motion, you have the right to make a motion. I'll entertain it.
Okay, then we follow with discussion. Um, make a motion that the town council, uh, go to vote on whether it accepts the town attorney's report.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a second. Any discussion on whether to accept a town attorney report, which is none? Any?
Greg, Ken?
Hi, Greg.
Items which could be reported on included some, include some obligations, prerequisites, if you will, to Wednesday's budget workshop. Uh, since the town attorney did not report on the status of those objections, I wanted to assure that the answers will be prepared prior to.
Greg, hold on. Discussion under your motion is to, was for discussion about adding, about voting on a no report, not.
Yes. And my discussion relates to the no report, the two-word report that we received excludes information relevant to a meeting we have in two days. So I objected to the reception of the no report because there's information we're expecting from the town attorney that I wanted to assure would that I wanted to assure would be prepared prior to Wednesday's budget hearing.
Okay, any other discussion on the item? On the motion?
Mr. Pia, I wanna, this is Councilman Connor, I wanna call the vote.
I'm sorry?
This is Councilman Connor, I wanna call the vote.
All right, call the vote made by Councilman Connor, we'll call the vote. The, the vote in the affirmative or yes will to be to accept, uh, the town attorney's report of which there is not made by Counselor Ken. A vote of no in the negative will be to deny the motion. All those in favor of vote in affirmative, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any Council Tabarez, Councilwoman Sheik, I believe, and Greg, I'm assuming you're voting yes?
To accept the, I'm voting no to accept the report.
A vote in the affirmative is, Greg, so.
All right, say, say it again.
Maybe you can have Mr., Mr., maybe you can have Mr. Ken rephrase his motion so everyone understands what it was.
What's your motion, Chairman?
Okay. Motion is to accept the attorney's no report. If you vote yes, you vote to accept the attorney's no report. If you vote no, you're voting not to accept the attorney's no report.
Greg, what are you talking about? Right, and I'm not being difficult, Greg, with all due respect, there's no report, so you wanna have a conversation?
With all due respect, Chris, we have a town attorney that we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars a month on.
We do.
We are, we are purposely given a no report every month, even though we have pending business in forty-eight hours.
Okay.
So therefore, the motion is, I object to the reception.
Okay.
The rules say that you then have to call a vote and then we, uh, you, you have, you were supposed to call the motion, but I'll make the motion. Uh, so if you, look, if it was a report, it was a no report, that was the content. So if you accept that as being the substance of our town attorney's work and the, in the issues that we have before us with the budget workshops, then you can accept the town's attorney's report by saying yes. If you believe the town attorney's report should have been more informative, then you would vote no.
Okay, motion by Mr. Ken, we'll, we'll have any other, it was, the question was called by Mr. Connor. In order to accept the report, in order to accept the report, which was no report, will, in the affirmative, will be a no. Mr. Leclerc, please help me here, sir, cause I really have no clue what he's asking.
I wish I could. Cause this is a report, uh, and the town attorney indicated he had no report, so I'm still not quite clear what Mr. Ken is trying to move by motion.
Greg, if you want.
I can jump in here. Mr. Ken said.
No, it is very simple. I mean, you may be.
Greg, Mr. Hodgson.
Let me try, let me try.
Democrats.
Excuse me.
Let me explain to, uh, we talked about transparency. In the interest of transparency, I'll ask the parliamentarian.
Greg, Mr. Hodgson, Town Attorney Hodgson has the floor. Please respect that and I will grant you an opportunity to speak.
Oh, I thought Mr. Leclerc had the floor and asked me a question. If he did not ask me a question, I apologize.
Town Attorney Hodgson.
Thank you. Cause I understood Mr. Ken, he was asking the council to reject my, and I'll use this in quotes, "report", end quote. So his motion was to reject the town attorney's report, cause I understood it. Is that correct, Mr. Ken?
Well, I objected to its reception, but the motion was whether to accept it or not.
Mr. Leclerc?
That the opposite.
Well, the confusion is you're asking to accept something that doesn't exist.
Well, it does exist in substance. It exists in substance.
Well, the town attorney indicated he had no report, so there is no report. So you're trying to accept something that doesn't exist.
Or reject something that doesn't exist.
Or, I'm, that's why I think the confusion is of the chairman and the entire council.
Uh, well, it, we, we have it on our agenda. We have consistently received a report that consisted of two words. Under the rules, if the report as presented is not satisfactory to a member of the body, you can object to the reception of the report and the report was two words, no report, but that is a report.
So Greg, so just so I'm clear, your motion is to object to the reception of the town attorney's report, correct?
No, by objecting to its reception, it forces us to go to a motion. And the motion is then, do you accept the attorney's report as presented? And if you vote yes, you accept the report. If you vote no, you do not accept the report.
Motion made by Mr. Ken to accept the report as presented. Um, and we'll go back, Mr. Parliamentarian, if it's okay. Mr. Connor had originally called the question. We were getting clarity on the motion.
Mr. Ken, i- if I, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ken, I, I think if he's asking, is there gonna be a response to his questions before Wednesday, the answer is yes. The town attorney's office is working on them. If that's his question that's leading to this.
I don't know.
It's just not, uh, is that what you're asking, Mr. Ken? Councilman Ken?
That's my objection to the no report, which is why we're, we went to the motion. And, uh, by making the motion, I was allowed an opportunity to discuss where I expressed my concern that our two-word report was insufficient for matters that are immediately before us.
So, so would you like?
It was a two-step, two-step was, first was to object to the reception of the no report, which is a report. Not to use, uh, too much philosophy here. But then the second item is the vote, is, is the motion that needs to be brought forward. So to, to end the discussion, to go forward with the vote, uh, the motion is to vote yes if you approve the town attorney's report and to vote no if you do not accept town attorney's report.
All right, mo- motion by Mr. Ken, um, a vote yes is to accept the town attorney's report as stated. Uh, vote no is to, uh, not. All, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of, of accepting the town attorney's report as is, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed?
I'm a no vote.
Greg, making your voting now?
Um, I'm voting no. I do not accept the report.
Thank you. Motion, motion fails seven to three. Next item on the agenda.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, motion passed seven. Motion was to accept.
Seven to three. Thank you, Town Attorney Leclerc. Motion passes seven to three.
Mr. Chairman?
Next, next item, Madam Mayor, yes, you have the floor.
A clarification, Mr. Chairman, um, through you and the Finance Director. We requested that the council proposed your questions forty-eight hours in advance for the budget hearings, the budget workshops, so the departments would be able to prepare the answers that the counselors are looking for. Um, this has no relevance to the town attorney's report on your agenda. Those, um, answers will be provided for Wednesday's hearing. So I just wanted to make that clarification, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order?
Greg, we're not gonna have a discussion. That was a point of order from the mayor on it.
All right, let's proceed.
Let's proceed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item six point one point one, an ordinance amending, uh, six dash five, six dash ten, six dash eleven in two oh three dash eight of the town code. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dancho and I motion that we, um, combine these items A and B together for, um, discussion.
Okay, motion by Ms. Dancho combines items, uh, A and B of six point one point one for discussion purposes. Uh, do I have a second on that?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
Second by Counselor O'Brien. Do I have a discussion on combining only?
Uh, discussion, Greg, Ken?
Discussion on combining, Greg?
Uh, yes, I apologize. I see six point one point one. And then.
And B.
I don't. Why am I missing A and B?
B is on page four.
Ms. Dancho, is that the subsection? No, you're right. You're right, Mr. B.
And Mr. Chairman, I believe, I believe it's ordinance, we should, I think Mr. Florak is, go ahead, John. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that B is a subparagraph of the previous ordinance, six of point five A and B. Uh, that's what that refers to.
So it's a subparagraph.
The agenda item on your, uh, agenda, six point one point one encompasses four different ordinances which we are proposing to modify and, uh, to send to the ordinance committee for discussion.
Thank you, Mr..
I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dancho. So would you like, would you like to restate it? Yeah?
Yes, I'll restate my motion that we, we move to, we, we move ordinance amending sections six dash five, six dash ten, six dash eleven and and two oh three dash eight, which is an ordinance regarding parking ticket enforcement. And at the first reading of the ordinance B and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council and at the same be adopted as a first reading and refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
Thank you, Counselor O'Brien. Uh, discussion, uh, we're gonna be sending Mr. Ordinance to amend. Mr. Florak, if you could just touch on, hold on one second, Mr. Town Attorney Florak, can you just touch on the, uh, nuances of this, sir?
Yeah, so the, uh, this came about because Assistant Town Attorney Tom Cotter, who was, uh, spearheading the collection of parking ticket revenues, found the existing process to be very inefficient. And, uh, he found that the state enabling a legissta- legislation allowed us to, um, basically uh, enforce parking tickets through the citation process. And many municipalities are, are doing that, uh, and, uh, we use the Fairfield, uh, ordinance as a model. So the, the game plan is to make the collection, uh, of parking ticket revenue more efficient. But in order to do that, we had to modify several of the ordinances. Now, if, if you pass this on to ordinance committee, I think we can have a, a, a serious discussion there. I know I've already heard from Chief McNeil, uh, on some of these points and I'm sure I'll hear from others. Uh, so that by the time the ordinance committee meeting is scheduled, uh, I think that we can have, uh, uh, a serious discussion and there may well be other changes beyond what, what are proposed here, but that's the genesis of.
Thank you, Attorney Morgan. I agree. Um, I think it might be prudent to, to, to give it some more time, then we'll, we'll basically tackle this in ordinance. Is there any further discussion on it?
Um, yeah. Greg, Ken?
All right, Greg.
Go ahead, Paul. Okay, thank you.
Greg, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, I'll address this to a, well, to the whole group. Um, I'd like to present a few questions. With the idea that the town attorney can bring answers to the ordinance committee. Uh, the first question would be, uh, under six point five A, it describes an application for a hearing and some, uh, requirements for that application. Uh, please bring a template application so that we can observe what it looks like to the ordinance meeting. And then second question is why the impounding aspect under two oh three fourteen and twenty-nine are separated from the rest of the ordinances otherwise listed? The third question is, uh, why is two oh three dash A separate? And does it apply to two oh three fourteen and two oh three twenty-nine? Just some questions that
we could.
anticipate.
Yeah, and I'll ask the town attorneys to prepare that for the ordinance meeting.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Ers, you got a question? Any, okay, any further discussion on the item? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion passed ten, zero. Thank you. Next item on, next item on the agenda, under resolutions, is six point two point one. I'll entertain a motion there.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Dave Harden?
Dave Harden, uh, Counsel Harden, yes, sir.
This is a resolution regarding public health emergency preparedness. Um, the Ledge Light Health District is authorized and has made funds available in an amount of, uh, one hundred eighteen thousand five hundred and nineteen per year to extend the financial assistance. Uh, the funds under this grant will be used to implement the Town of Stratford Public Health Preparedness Plan and the continuous development of regional emergency preparedness plans and continues to develop of the MRC team for the Stratford Region One. Now therefore, uh, be it resolved by the council of the Town of Stratford.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Counsel Harden. Uh, motion by Counsel Harden, do I have a second? Uh, your Perillo, I'll second that. Counsel Perillo, thank you, sir, I'm a second. Um, any discussion on the resolution? It's a good, good, good one as always. Any discussion on it? Pretty straightforward? No? Okay. We'll call that for a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion passed ten, zero. Next item on the agenda is item six point two point two. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, Dave Harden?
Mr. Council Hardin, yes, sir.
This is a resolution regarding academic detailing for opiate safety. The Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, DMAS, is authorized made funds available to, in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars to extend financial assistance. Funds under this grant will be used to implement academic detailing for opiate safety, the Grant for Prevention, Treatment, and Recovery in Activities Related to the Opiate Addition. And whereas both desire from the Town of Stratford, interest of the Town of Stratford execute the grant agreement with DMAS to accept the funding and the connection with this project. Therefore, now it be resolved by the Stratford Town Council.
Okay, motion by Councilor Hardin. Do I have a second to that motion?
Bill Perillo, I'll second that.
Second by Councilor Perillo. Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Another?
Yeah, Chairman, also there is.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Can you just tell me what, what exactly is academic detailing? I was just wondering what exactly does that entail?
For the grant?
Academic detailing, just pretty much the meaning of that, that term.
Go ahead, Mayor.
So that basically, that basically pertains.
Hold up. Hold on, Dave. Hold on one text. Mayor Hoidik, you have the floor.
If Council Hardin wants to answer, I also wanted to make available Andrea is on the, on the call too, and she can also explain.
Andrea's on too.
Chairman Pia, you, you pick who goes first.
Andrea, Andrea, I'm going to give you the floor on this part. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so, so it's really, it's really an a type of training that we're providing to prescribers and pharmacists in terms of, you know, evaluating and informing them about opioid safety. The, the grant also is going to distribute two types of campaign materials to prescribers and pharmacists, something called Change the Script and Live Loud. In addition, we will be distributing naloxone to targeted communities. And we will be conducting or participating in bimonthly meetings with the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services and the State Health Department, funded other health departments and districts who are, who are doing, doing this, this work. So it's really, it's, it's really, you know, there's, there's, there's training, training the trainer and yeah, it's, it's an odd term, not going to lie.
Well, thank you. Thank you so, so, thank you so much for explaining that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrea. Any, just any further discussion on the grant? Nope? Okay. We'll call for a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passed ten zero. Next item on the agenda is item six point three.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Connor from the Eighth District. I'd like to make a motion. Whereas the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection is authorized and made funds available to the town in an amount of thirty million, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four cents for reimbursement of capital expenditures related to emergency communications and grants under the installation of six workstations at the Stratford Emergency Communications Center. And the rest is, is in the pony.
All right, motion by Councilman Connor. Do I have a second to the motion?
Bill O'Brien seconds with a minor amendment. It's thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine, not thirty million.
Oh, my, my fault.
Urban amendment. Good job, Bill.
I accept the amendment.
Any, any, it's, seconded by Councilor O'Brien. Do I have any further discussion? This is a great grant to help out our, our friends over at Dispatch, and I would like to thank everybody there, including Mr. Shredinsky for leading. Any further discussion on it? No? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passed ten zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda under new business is seven point one.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Connor again. I'd like to resolve that the lease of town property located on Chapel Street to Crown Castle Towers, oh six dash two LLC for a wireless communication facility, cell tower for referred, be referred to the Planning Commission for CGS Section eight dash twenty-four review and a public hearing pursuant to CGS Section seven dash one sixty-three.
Okay, motion by Councilman Connor. Do I have a second to the motion?
Bill O'Brien seconds.
Second by Councilman O'Brien. Discussion on this. As Councilman Connor said, this is purely just to send it to planning for an eight twenty-four review with.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
One second. Hold on. So we'll have discussion. So Mr. Taveras, you have the floor.
Is there a projected revenue for the town for these, these towers?
I will ask, I will ask either the mayor or Ms. Savo at this time for projected. Again, I don't know if we have been, never sending it to planning at this time. Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have, there is some revenue. We just don't know the exact amount. It's between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, Counselor.
Any other discussion on that?
Greg Can.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Chairman. Was this item before us maybe a year ago, another cell tower on Chapel Street? And at that time, if it is the same item, there was an issue of neighbors not feeling that they'd been informed. I know it's going to planning. I was just curious if it was the same tower or not.
Yeah, and, and, and Greg, I'll let the mayor jump in in a moment, is there was something that came, had come up previously, or don't quote me on the exact date. This is in a new location opposite the side of the street that the other one, and Madam Mayor, you, if you'd like to provide more detail on that?
No, thank you, Counselor. You did just fine.
Okay. So, excellent. Any other further discussion on it before we send it to planning for them to do their due diligence? Nope? Okay. Call up for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes ten zero. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is item seven point two. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dancho, and I motion that we move to accept the favorable recommendation of the Tax Partnership Screening Committee for a tax abatement for four ninety-five Lordship Boulevard for a three-year abatement with the first year being seventy percent of tax abated, the second year being fifty percent of tax abated, and the third year being thirty percent tax abated.
Okay, motion by Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second to the motion?
Perillo, I'll make.
Mr. Perillo, is that you? I thought I could.
Yes, Counselor.
Okay, second, Perillo. We'll have discussion. So I'll open up with, just to kind of give everyone a recap, because this is our first one we've had come before the council quite some time, especially for, for this council currently sitting together. It's the first application. To give everyone just a little bit perspective and recap, we started working on revising the, the original Tax Partnership Screening Committee slash Abatement Ordinance. It's been on the books for years and years. And we revised that in two thousand and nineteen. The council approved it. And in my opinion, it really put the town in a much better position in order to accept these ordinances and work with a potential developer and, and working with them to make sure it's a right opportunity for the town. So what we did is, this was an application that came through. If you haven't had a chance to look at the tax abatement, excuse me, Tax Partnership Committee recording or minutes, four ninety-five Lordship Boulevard is, is where what we commonly in, in town have referred to as the Old Exxon Mobile Property, which was really a rundown, blighted, old decrepit structure doing nothing for years in, in a nutshell. And a group by the name of GFI Partners came in. And if you haven't driven by recently, I recommend you do because the, this group of individuals is, is going full steam ahead, and it's going to provide significant tax revenue going forward for the town. It's right in the heart of, you know, what we, what I always call our, our, our commercial center down there. And the Tax Partnership Meeting, excuse me, Committee met, reviewed all the revenue projections, the year-over-years, especially what was coming in on, on the original two thousand and nineteen grant list and assessment and gave an offer of what we felt was a very fair and equitable three-year abatement on this property, which they already have significant people coming in. And just to put in perspective too, it's about three hundred and sixty thousand in square footage going forward. So I want to thank the Tax Abatement Group, Attorney Leclair for working with, for Ms. Tax Assessor Donna Lousky. And I'll open it up for any further discussion on this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. What exactly is going in there?
Yeah.
Any prospects yet?
So, so, hang on, hang on, everybody. Mr. Taveras has a floor. What is exactly going in there? The group is submitted plans and structures, and Mayor Hoidik, if you'd like to jump in at any time, please feel free. But Paul, Mr. Taveras, to your question, structural warehouse and distribution facility, they're also, which is public now because they were on the call, they're also working with, expanding with Athletic Brewing, which is growing at a rapid pace and is an amazing community partner. And they're looking for a significant new space so they didn't have to leave the town or the state, which they were looking to do. So this keeps them in their hometown where they started. And it's really kind of a unique thing because of, you know, looking back forward, this, this new, a non-alcoholic, if you haven't heard of it, Athletic Brewing is a non-alcoholic brewing facility, and it has really taken off nationwide in the last few years. But I, I see it as a great opportunity because Two Roads, you know, we all, it's a wonderful thing what we have and what we've seen develop, you know, in front of our own eyes over the last, you know, six, eight years. And this was another longtime blighted property that, that wanted to work with the town. So I think it's a great opportunity for everybody moving forward. And one of the things, Paul, just so you know too, and, and you can, you could listen to the recording, you know, between two and three hundred jobs are projected there, which is a significant opportunity for, for all the businesses right around there. Let me just, just look at, you know, places like the Cricket, you know, all those people have to eat lunch every day. So it's going to help the small business owners. It's going to keep a great business in town. It's keeping great investment, and it, and the revenues going forward is going to be significant on the town side. So I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Any other? Go ahead, Caitlin, yes.
Just to clarify, is the abatement for the entire building, or is it only allotted for the Athletic Brewing Company in the building?
Good question. Yeah, so the, the question is, is it for the entire, it's for the entire property. The abatement that we're, we're voting on tonight, and Town Attorney Leclair can verify that, is for the person, excuse me, for the property tax payment, only of owner, which is GFI. They will be signing, what they said, will be signing a triple net lease with Athletic, and we'll filter that down to savings to them.
Greg, Greg Can.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Chris. Just take a step back. If you had the land and then you had a building, the building was demolished, is this abatement for the new building that's going on the land?
It's, yes, Greg. So the new, the new abatement is for the new building going on the land, of which, to give you numbers, Ms. Atlousky assessed the new number, the new improved value, I should say, at a little over twenty million dollars, twenty million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty, to be specific. And she stated all those numbers in the, in the meeting. But yes, it's on the new building going there.
So we, the town will still collect tax on the land that's not abated. But this schedule applied to the new building. Are those? And then I'll ask a third question.
Yeah.
Then occupants will, will possess the building, one of which may be Athletic Brewing.
Yeah.
They could also apply for abatements on the machinery and other personal property that they plan to use to improve the building.
That is an accurate statement. They could, they could apply if they so choose on personal property.
And the, the town will still get the land value tax, just we're abating the, the building itself?
Yes, this vote is solely on abating the building assessed value tax. Mr. Leclair, am I accurate?
Yes, you are, Mr. Chairman. That's set out in the ordinance. I'll refer to the council members who don't know. It's in one ninety-one dash nine at sec of your Stratford Town Code, which is the Tax Ascendent Program. The abatement's applicable to the value of buildings and improvements only.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, GFI, for investing in our community.
Any other questions? Or, excuse me, any other discussion on the item from the counselors?
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien, just a couple of comments.
Yeah.
I, thanks to the internet, it's great. What's GFI Partners? And there's a whole bunch of their, the things they're doing, and right in the middle of it, a great overhead shot of four ninety-five Lordship Boulevard, Stratford, Connecticut. So it's great to see. And isn't it true that even with the abatement, we'll be getting more in taxes now than we're, when we're, it was just sitting there empty?
Yeah, the, the, Mr. O'Brien's question is, on that, based off the abatement schedule, the town is still going to be a plus fifty percent year-over-year revenue, even in year one on the property taxes based off the prior two thousand and nineteen assessment. So that was one of the reasons and the factors that the big, the committee felt that a three-year was very equitable to both sides, both the town as well as the applicant. And the fact that we're coming out positive already in the first year, revenue-wise, it, you know, as most people know, most new businesses is starting up, that three to five year num, year, excuse me, that three to five years is so critical to get up and running. So this really helps, you know, basically the, the applicant in, in Athletic who's going in as well as the town.
And I think it's a good time to point out that thanks to Bruce Alicey, who passed away much too early, and his great work, we got Two Roads Brewery, which has been extremely successful. And now thanks to the work of Mary Dean, working with Athletic Brewing, they've come to town and they're going to be expanding here. So they should be recognized for the great work they've done.
Thank you, Council O'Brien. Council voice, Councilor voice, now I saw your hand, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering, do projects like this, you know, qualify for, like, does it, does this town is like economic development for the town, you know, getting a new building on the site and bringing new jobs to the community?
It's a positive. It's, it's adding revenue. And if, if their projections if their projections are correct, between two hundred to three hundred jobs, I'll take it. Any other discussion on this item? No?
Chris, Greg Can. This, I believe, when Mobile Exxon, or the owner thereof, was in arrears, it was recognized that their annual tax payment for their building in, in the land was about a half million dollars. It's, it's good that the property is reoccupied and reused and that we all recognize the value of economic development. Thank you.
Any other, any other discussion on, on the item? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote then. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passed ten zero. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is item seven point three. I'll entertain a motion over on that.
Go ahead, Laura.
Go ahead, Greg. I'll second you.
Go ahead, Greg. Do you want to make a motion to approve?
Well, motion to accept the resolution in support of home rule and municipal zoning.
Okay, motion to accept by, by Council Can. Do I have a second to the motion?
This is Laura Dancho, and I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Dancho. All those, excuse me, sorry, discussion. Been a long night. So we'll open it up for discussion on, on the acceptance of, of the home rule. This was sent over just for, just for background, and then we'll have discussion. This was sent over by Planning Commissioner and voted on unanimously over at employee, planning, excuse me, planning and zoning. And I will open it up for discussion.
Greg Can. Greg Can.
Go ahead Greg.
Uh, okay, Chris, thank you. Uh, I, I read the motion and there's not a paragraph in there that I can disagree with. But what, and I want to thank Crystal Havy for uh, writing a letter. I'm not sure if everyone received it, but it was a very thoughtful uh, justification for why this uh, was authored and why the zoning wants to put it forward. When I talked to, well, talked to uh, Mr. Habanski and Chris, I was concerned that we were not proposing solutions or recommendations to Hartford. Now, we're not legislators in Hartford, but we should be not just advising our elected representatives and senators to reject all initiatives related to quote home rule, but we also should be putting forward our own recommended solutions. And it's because the resolution is more of a cut and dried no, even though I don't disagree with any of the items, I would much prefer a resolution that contains suggestions and recommendations for solutions.
Okay. Thank you Greg. Um, any other further, just to point, just to make a point, Mr. What, Mr. Can was referring to, um, Commissioner Silhavy, excuse me, Chairman Silhavy of the zoning board, um, sent over a letter which I have here, I'll ask, I know was sent out to the counselors uh, and asked to be distributed appropriately. Um, we'll pen it to the minutes and, but it's, as Mr. Can mentioned, it's a very well-in-depth detailed explanation. Um, is, is purely just based on, excuse me, purely of the zoning board's opinion as to why they voted to um, accept this resolution of home rule, which would essentially, in a nutshell, keep local zone, keep zoning decisions to a local level, um, into their local uh, elected representative versus um, having a place like Hartford make it for a local. So uh, any, any other further discussion from any other counselors?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Laura.
I have Ms. Dantcho first and then Ms. Sheik will be going next. Ms. Dantcho.
I, I just also wanted to point out that Crystal Havy is also chairperson of the Housing Partnership Commission that we just reinstated a year or so ago or more probably. And they are, they have been actively working on a, a housing assessment and plan for the town, which I believe that they plan to have ready to submit to the town council maybe next month or so. Um, so they should have some solutions in there. And um, I, I totally support um, keeping these types of decisions uh, with our elected zoning of, in, in the, the different commissions of zoning and different boards um, who are elected and also give the public their voice for these types of decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Dantcho. Um, Councilwoman Sheik, I have you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, when I read through um, the entirety of the resolution and I looked back to the minutes from uh, the zoning commission um, and uh, comments from uh, some of the commission members, you know, at, at first read through this, of course, you know, the knee-jerk reaction is that um, it sounds like people are afraid and they don't want to be told what to do from any of our state legislators. But when looking to the actual legislation, which still has not passed up in Hartford and it's a work in progress, um, several of the bills, which are kind of cut and pasted into some of the language that's in this resolution, it, it's not a total reflection of, of what is happening up in Hartford. And, you know, yes, we have our housing partnership uh, that's been um, you know, revitalized, for lack of a better word, for the first time in 10 years. And there were several solutions, a whole list of solutions which were presented to us, which have teeth and we can actually do something to better serve our residents here in forward thinking and planning. But my concern with this resolution um, is that there was no other documentation provided to us as the council with specific citations of where um, you know, this resolution is coming from. So I, I don't feel 100% comfortable with passing, or I shouldn't say passing, but in um, lending 100% of my support, when I don't, we as a body, we don't have the citations of, there are multiple bills moving up in Hartford right now um, that are around zoning. So, and things have changed quickly, even within the past two weeks as we're moving into uh, you know, the long stretch of the legislative session. So I would request that the commission, our commission, our zoning commission that put together this resolution, is that where this resolution is coming from? I, I just have a whole list of questions that I would want uh, answered before making a decision. And part of my other concern um, is that, you know, with the American Rescue Plan, there is a lot of money coming in to the state and then the state is donating to municipalities. Um, and I don't want Stratford to be boxed out of um, potential um, you know, contracts, for lack of a better word, or agreements where we will need additional funding to help some of the uh, you know, projected resolutions, really, that the Stratford Housing Partnership had offered to us as, as a body to use in order to better um, develop, serve, preserve um, our land and uh, housing market here in Stratford. So um, if our town attorneys have any um, insight as to the specific citations of some of the claims that the resolution uh, is, is making, that would be helpful. Particularly, what is it? In the state statute, zoning statute 8-2.
So, all right, so discussion on this will continue. Any other counselors who like had to, like to add in? On discussion items, Captain, Mr. Poisson, go ahead sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think uh, the letter that um, that Greg referred to from uh, Chairman Silhavy uh, really pointed out all of the commission's feelings. And the bottom line here is that no matter what bills are being tossed around up in Hartford, they all want to take local decisions away and not have local zoning commissions make decisions for their own towns with no public input. And I think our bipartisan zoning commission voted 100% in sending this resolution to us because they don't agree with it either. And I don't think anybody should agree with it. Local people should make local decisions on their property, not the state capital.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Counselor Poisson. Um, any other counselors that want to add in that have not yet? Uh, for discussion purposes?
Chris, go ahead.
Just want to make sure everybody else, uh, hold on one second Greg, is there any other counselors? All right, go ahead Greg.
Uh, thank you, I'll, I'll be brief. Ken Poisson just said like, all the bills being proposed. Um, and that's not true. They, they act, the provisions that are largely referred to here were removed on the 31st of March from the bill, whose number I can't recall. But the primary bill that's worried uh, by our zoning commission, they removed that home rule or rule, if you will. So it's not a, it's not part of the current discussion. But as Caitlin mentioned, this is an ongoing process and there's actually four or five different bills with multiple iterations. And it's, so nothing's done. I like this resolution, but because we're sort of saying a blanket no, I'm going to abstain from the resolution, not out of disrespect for the zoning commission, but in hope that we can provide constructive uh, input to the process that's occurring in Hartford.
Thank you Greg. And any other counselors that have not spoken yet? Um, Madam Mayor, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. And having served in the General Assembly as Counselor Can, waited out earlier this evening, it is really imperative when bills of this nature that are pervasive in many committees, because the intention is to move this in one way or another, that the direction and the insight and the opinion of the local communities be stressed very strongly and fervently, that local control remain local. This bill, it's not just one bill, as Counselor Can and Sheik pointed out, it's many bills. But the policy to take an overarching zoning and planning process at the state level and not allow it to be local is problematic. This bill, these bills would take any major road, any state road, and a quarter of a mile in from that state road could be modified unlike anything we've ever seen before. Paradise Green Stratford Center could have housing complexes erected in this, per, per this language, um, without anyone from planning or zoning um, having any standing. So it's, I think it's very, very important. And I've worked very hard with CCM to, to modify this language um, in these bills to present the local opinion to the state legislature. So if you feel strongly about this, I suggest you act on it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, any other further discussion?
Uh, this is, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Laura, and I just wanted to um, point out that, that a detailed resolution was included with our pony that um, includes a lot of information, which we were just talking about, very detailed. And at the very bottom, it says that this is going to be sent to all members of the state legislature, planning and development, finance, revenue and bonding, and the housing committees. So um, this, this is uh, it's, it's in your pony for everyone to read. I don't know if you saw it or if you didn't see it. But um, this is, this is going to move to our state reps in Hartford.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dantcho. Uh, I'll, hearing no other discussion, I'll just, I'll just, like I said, it, it's concerning to me. I just believe fundamentally that the local zoning, um, you're do, are duly erected, elected representatives on a local level, uh, forgetting, doesn't matter what party, should have the final say on zoning. And that's the, what this was sent over unanimously. It was, I was watching the video today actually of, of the zoning board meeting and uh, Commissioner Francis, you know, and I quoted him, he says, "I definitely think this is an overreach and, and I 100% agree with them." I couldn't agree with more, the words are perfect. Um, not to allow anybody a public comment is, in my opinion, goes beyond transparency in government. And, you know, I couldn't imagine a situation where if this went through and we're still working on the Center School property, where the, where the folks and residents on Sutton Avenue don't get to say what's going in their backyard. Um, that, that to me is, is, is not government, um, in the way it should be done. So um, I'm 100% uh, for accepting this resolution um, in, in moving forward as used, as was unanimously sent over by, by the planning and zoning. So with that, um, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of acceptance of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed?
One abstention.
Uh, Greg, what's the reason for the extension again? Because it's got to be, it's got to be a conflict of interest for extension, Greg.
The fact that it does not contain any solutions or to uh, that's the abstention, uh, the, the reason is, is, is that not a sufficient reason to abstain?
99.9%, it's got to be a conflict of interest. Mr. Town Attorney, can you verify that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's in your rules, Roman numeral XXIV 24. Uh, no member shall be excused from voting except on matters involving a conflict of interest. And that further cites the Charter, section 2.2.8.
Thank you, Attorney Leclerc. I vote in favor of the resolution.
So Greg is a yes, uh, uh, any opposed? Okay, so.
Yeah.
You opposed Caitlin? Yeah.
I, I regrettably am going to have to oppose this um, for the reasons that I cited earlier. And um, I hope that, I hope that Stratford's in a position to keep moving forward and uh, building a better community where we invite people and are able to have good relationships with our elected officials to receive funding.
It's a yes or a no under vote, we, we had the discussion, so you're a no? Okay. So no for Ms. Sheik? And Mr. Taveras, I, were you a yes or a no, sir? I just want to make sure everyone's accurate. He's on mute, I, I hear, I see his mouth move, Paul?
Oh.
I just, yeah. I have you on mute, I see it.
Sorry, I'm a no vote.
Okay.
No, I vote no.
Okay, so I have it down as 8 to 2, uh, in favor of accepting. Thank you all, motion passes. Um, next item on the agenda is going to be uh, item number 7.4.1, Inland Wetlands. Um, this is a four-year term, it's appointed by the council chair uh, per our town charter. And I will, uh, be it resolved that David Chess, Mr. Chess of Elm Street, be hereby and is reappointed to the inland wetlands commission with a term that expires March 14th of 2024. Um, this does not require a vote, as I stated, it's per the town charter, it's an appointment by the council chairman. So, thank you all in support of Mr. Chess. Um, next item on the agenda is item 7.4.2. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dantcho on item 7.4.2, the Harbor Water Management Commission alternate. I am pleased to um, to accept my friend and fellow sailor, Britt Hughes of Husatonic Avenue, that he be uh, appointed as an alternate member of the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission for the vacated seat of Anthony Swanson with a term that expires May 31st, 2021. And I'm excited to have somebody with his uh, boating and sailing and waterfront experience in a position such as this.
Okay, motion, uh, Councilman Dantcho, do I have a second to the motion?
Greg Can.
Seconded by Greg, thank you sir. Um, any discussion on Mr. Pointing? Ms. Dantcho said he was a past Commodore, which, which means he knows, knows a little bit about sailing in the water. I'll take that as a positive.
All right.
As opposed to sailing somewhere else?
That's true. Um, seeing no further discussion, we'll call it for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 There are votes, any, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0, thank you all. Next item is item 7.4.3, I'll entertain a motion.
So this is Bill O'Brien, just uh, confirming of the mayoral appointments of Karen Dayton to the Short Beach Park Commission and Bob Jacob to the Short Beach Park Commission.
Okay, motion by Counselor O'Brien, which is confirmed uh, previously by Mayor Hoedick um, on items A and B. I'll entertain, excuse me, I'll ask for a second.
Greg Can.
Greg, uh, on the second, um, just to, these two individuals are, I'll just add, I'll just say, these, these two people, every community wants to have in their community, working in volunteering form. They just care about the town and, and the kids and, you know, I, I, I live close to Short Beach and, you know, it was, it was um, Karen Dayton and Bob Jacob worked extremely hard with the administration and the Short Beach Commission and, and friends of Short Beach to, to basically make movie nights a few years ago, go from 50 people up to almost 2,000, where kids and families were coming from Stratford and all different surrounding communities. So it's, they've really done a great job. So I'd like to thank them as well. Any further discussion?
Greg Can.
Go ahead Greg.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, I want to validate what, the fact that Karen and Bob have done heroic work in improving the level of services and the value of the amenities at Short Beach. But my question may be more, I have a question for the mayor, and that would be, as we, I don't mean to say cycle through, uh, as people like get on commissions and gain expertise, they should stay there if they're doing a great job. But how do we develop new talent? And is there, is there a mechanism that we could use? I'm not opposed to the confirmations, but to keep Bob and Karen. I'm not opposed to the confirmations, but to keep Bob and Karen involved, but give other people an opportunity to serve on a commission. So.
Is the question for to the mayor, you said?
Please.
Mayor Hoytik?
Term limits.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
The counselor asked how you get other people to be involved, and I said term limits.
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Any other discussion, any other discussion on this?
Very good, got a vote.
Got a vote on it still. No other discussion? Okay. Hearing no, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any, any opposed? No opposed, motion passed unanimously, 10-0. Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second, Bill O'Brien.
I have a motion by Greg, I have a second by Mr. O'Brien. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passed unanimously, thank you all.